The January, I'm sorry, February 26th School Board meeting. So we will actually begin our meeting. And Dr. Cash, I'd like to ask if you would lead us in the flag salute, please.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Buenas tardes, soy Rafael Santana. Tenemos servicio de traducción en español. Obviamente algunos de ustedes ya tienen los aparatos, pero si tienen algún problema con los aparatos estamos a su disposición ahí atrás, en el cuarto de atrás, por estas puertas dobles. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired, if anybody is requiring those. And we will begin our meetings with introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions. Dr. Cash?
Well, thank you very much, President Lamone. I have a number of things to report on this evening, so bear with me. Might be a little longer than normal. I want to start with a rec special recognition tonight, and that is the Santa Barbara Athletic Roundtable. The mission of the Santa Barbara Athletic Roundtable is to recognize and support athletic participation as an important means of fostering discipline, teamwork, self-respect, personal responsibility, and camaraderie. Tonight, we recognize Jay Smith, the group's founder and chairman, who has been the organization's driving force. With Jay tonight is Lori Lighty, the Santa Barbara Athletic Roundtable's president-elect. Since its inception in 1984, the Roundtable has provided tremendous support to area coaches and athletes in our high schools. With the support of the Santa Barbara Bank and Trust, Jay and others who support youth athletic programs have provided untold opportunities that our community's children would not otherwise have ever had. Financially, the Roundtable has contributed over $400,000 to athletic programs that benefit Dos Pueblos, San Marcos, Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, and Bishop High Schools. Funds have been raised through the organization's High Five Golf Tournament, which I've had the pleasure to be part of for many years. As Santa Barbara High School Athletic Director Joe Chenoweth said, "The Santa Barbara Athletic Roundtable gives our student-athletes tremendous exposure by highlighting their achievements both on the playing field or court and in the classroom through their hard work, good sportsmanship, and dedication to their field of play." Tonight, I'd like to present to the Athletic Roundtable a plaque on behalf of our school district and specifically to Jay, who I'd like Jay to please come forward. For, thank you for being here. Jay, on behalf of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, I'd like to present you with this plaque to the Santa Barbara Athletic Foundation with appreciation from our school district. Jay, thank you very much. I know we'd like to hear a few words from you.
First of all, the, I appreciate Dr. Cash's promotion. I did not found the Roundtable. The Roundtable was founded about 1969 by Bill Burka, who used to work for the city as a rec department, who is now long connected with the Lakers. And some of you may recall that Larry Crandall and I believe Cesar Usaka. So I'll take credit for the High Five Golf Tournament, which was taken over by the Roundtable in 2005. And I've been on the board for a number of years. But Lori is our president-elect. We're a all-volunteer organization, and we have both men and women on our board. And Lori will tell you a little bit about our last event, which was very successful, to celebrate Women's Day in sports. And I appreciate very much the award, and we appreciate how important athletics are to our youth. Santa Barbara, as a small community compared to who we compete against, does extremely well if you've followed the teams in the paper. So, thank you very much, appreciate it. And our thanking, I'm thanking you on behalf of the Roundtable, not on behalf of me, because I'm just one of many.
As Jay was saying, on February 4th, we celebrated Title IX, which gave women opportunity in sports. And we invited 450 of our local girl athletes from the high schools to come to lunch at the Earl Warren Showgrounds. And we had a great lunch and a wonderful speaker who inspired and motivated the girls and gave them a little snapshot of what you can do after athletics. So we had an Olympic swimmer who is now heading up a nonprofit called Never Ever Give Up. And it was an emotional story, but a very heroic and inspiring story. And the girls left very excited, and I think they all went back to even workout harder than they had before. So it was very nice to see in the Roundtable just so much. We have press lunches every Monday from September through June where the athletes get to come and get their moment with the press and get their, see their names in the paper the next day. And it really helps them too for college recruiting. So again, it's just another little thing that we can do to help these kids get a college education. So thank you again for the nice award.
Thank you. Well, we have nine National Merit Scholar finalists this year. Our congratulations go out to three students from Santa Barbara High School, Colin Fristow, Catherine Joseph, and Henry Richardson. And from Dos Pueblos High School, Agneta Cleland, Daniel Gay, Brenna Hensley, Sylvia Madau, Madau, Daniel Richmond, and Helen Yang. And our first student from Alta Vista, Daniel Foster. We congratulate all nine of those students for the great work that they did on the PSAT. They're in a pool of finalists nationwide who'll be considered for scholarships by the National Scholarship Corporation. Wellness Day is this week, March 1st, and all of our schools have scheduled a myriad of activities. And they, Barbara Kiani's done a great job in posting many of those on e-news, but I'll give you an example of three. Adams School is going to have, and I know every board member except Mr. Herron, you're probably excused from this, is going to have an all-school zumba session and a leprechaun chase, which will also be scheduled. So maybe you'll be ready for the leprechaun chase. Lacoumbre Junior High School is going to bring out the hula hoops and jump ropes as part of its fitness campaign. And Santa Barbara Junior High is messaging health and wellness information students throughout the day, and will have music and dance in the quad. And if any of you haven't seen the YouTube video of Principal Garcia dance, that would be worth Googling as well to see how he stays healthy. As our, as our community is aware, we're moving toward the full implementation of the Common Core state standards. And this change will begin starting with the next school year with expected full implementation in the 2014-15 school year. The Common Core are dramatically different standards for students in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. Particularly, the scope and sequence of standards is different, and the classroom experience for students will be dramatically different. No longer will the teaching and learning be concentrated on the acquisition of discrete skills and knowledge in isolation of other content. Instead, the teaching, and importantly, the learning, will be about critical thinking, problem-solving, evidence-based writing, and a phrase I love out of the Common Core, mathematical power. The standards will also require a dramatically different form of assessment for our students in our schools. For schools in California, the 2013-14 school year will be a difficult year of transition because we are expecting our teachers to begin implementing units of the Common Core starting this next school year in August. And we'll actually have some grades in some subjects fully implementing the Common Core by spring of 2014. No longer, however, will the sole level of expectations be the California standards, which we've had for over a decade. Unfortunately, for California schools, there still is no state answer regarding what the state testing and reporting system will be for 2014, what and how students will be assessed. As a result of our work in implementing the Common Core, the results from whatever assessment awaits our students in 2014 will be as far away from reflecting the work students actually do in their classrooms as it has ever been. Because the smarter-balanced assessment will not be implemented until 2015, and we need to begin implementing the Common Core next year, our students in 2014 will be assessed on standards that are no longer being taught in our classrooms. How valuable will the results of those assessments in 2014 be? From my perspective as the superintendent, there will be very little value in those results as they will not assess what is being taught in our classrooms. We need to move forward with the Common Core's full implementation. It's a dramatic change, but it's a change that reflects the 21st century, a change most every teacher I've talked to is excited and also a little nervous about. Holding teachers, schools, and importantly, students, however, accountable for results on an assessment that will not assess the actual teaching and learning that's taking place in our classrooms, I believe would be irresponsible. I hope, and instead I'll be leading our district, and I'm certain our school board and parents in the community, to continue to support the changes that the Common Core will require that we'll see in our classrooms and our schools. This is a, the dawn of a very different era for us in education. And I think most of us that are involved in it are very, very excited. Couple of final announcements. The artwork of our Six No Place For Hate poster contest winners is now on display at the Montecito Bank and Trust. Three of the award-winning entries from Peabody Charter School are at the downtown branch on State Street. One entry from San Marcos High School is at the bank's Cairea location. And two more from San Marcos are at the Lacoumbre branch on Upper State Street. Our district's physical fitness testing for elementary students, grades five and seven started, has already started, and it ends March 22nd. And the star writing test for grades four and seven takes place on March 5th. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board, our turn. Any comments or correspondence? Ms. Idelson?
I wanted to mention some of the things the last couple of weeks. I attended a Thrive meeting showing, it was considered a results fair along with Dr. Paz and Ms. Lamone. We were there. Very nice education in the different activities of Thrive that are, is going on in our schools. And then that same evening, went to a school board training in San Inez for their educate, education about the Brown Act and school board ethics. That was also very enlightening. And then also attended, at Santa Barbara Junior High, the Career Day as a speaker. And I actually walked in to just check it out and ended up substituting for somebody. And it was really fun, and I'll hopefully do that again next, in the coming years. And then also attended a interview process put on by the American Association of University Women for a, it's called Tech Trek Camp that is sponsored out at UCSB each summer for seven, uh, girls that are going, entering eighth grade. And it's a full scholarship for students from our junior highs. They select 25 young girls, and they submit essays. They're recommended by their science and math teachers, and it was a really nice experience to see that.
Great, thank you. Any other feedback, correspondence? I do want to share with the board that superintendents and board presidents from Carpinteria Unified, Santa Barbara City College, and our district have been meeting about potentially having a collaborative meeting with a tentative date of April 16th. So I wanted to share that with you so that you know that a few of us are meeting to try to coordinate that. Like Ms. Idelson, I was also at the Thrive Results Fair, but in addition to the Leadership Council. So the Thrive countywide program has a leadership council that meets. And actually, we, what we reviewed was a little bit about their strategic plan, so where they're going in the next few years to come. And in addition, I think, I know that Ms. Parker attended a longer day, but I attended the P-20 STEM Council that's hosted through UC Santa Barbara. And it was so great to see our science consultants, Holly and Bridget there, along with Bayside. And so the public may remember that we had a presentation about Bayside a few months ago, maybe? A few months ago, and the science curriculum related to, for our elementary schools. So I got to actually hear from some of the folks that work with the students and the school districts in the Bay Area and learn a little bit more about their model for how they do the work they do. And of course, they touched upon the K-12 science framework and all kinds of other stuff. So that was great to attend and very informative. So with that, we move forward to announcement of closed-session action. And we actually have no reportable action for closed session, and this leads us to public comment.
We do have three speakers for public comment. Speakers, you will get three minutes, and I will give you a 30-second warning. If the comments are translated, you essentially have the same amount of time, three minutes in English and three minutes in Spanish additionally. So the first speaker is Jesus Orozco.
Buenas noches. Estimados miembros de la Mesa Directiva del Distrito Escolar. Mi nombre es Jesús Orozco. Yo soy padre y estoy escrito en las clases de padres adelante en la Escuela Primaria de Monroe. Me gustaría solicitar al distrito redesigne a todos los estudiantes que son competentes de inglés que cumplan con los requisitos. Los estamos de que la mitad de los estudiantes de las primarias del distrito son estudiantes de aprendizaje de inglés. Es una meta para todos estos estudiantes es llegar a ser competentes en inglés para que puedan tomar las clases regulares y avanzar en la escuela. Podemos ver que el programa de instrucción está trabajando aquí y que los estudiantes están progresando y mejorando. Sin embargo, según los informes de pros... Según los informes, proceso de mejoramiento. Sin embargo, según los informes proporcionados por DILAC, había cientos de estudiantes que cumplieron con los requisitos y no fueron elegibles para ser reclasificados, pero no había sido redesignados. Entendemos que los estudiantes reclasificados logran mejor éxito en su trabajo académico. Y pedimos que todo lo que se puede hacer sea hecho para que estos alumnos que son elegibles sean redesignados. Esto les permitirá comenzar a tomar las clases que les ayudará más después en la secundaria y en la preparatoria, y para que sean más listos para la universidad. Gracias.
And will we get an English translation?
Will.
Okay.
Team members of the school board. My name is Jesús Orozco. I am a parent, and I am enrolled in the Padres Adelante class at Monroe Elementary School. I would like to request that the district redesignate all students who are proficient in English and who meet all the qualifications. We learned that this year, half of the district's elementary students were English learners. A goal for all the students is to become proficient in English so that they can take regular classes in advanced school. The instructions program is working here, and students are progressing and improving. However, according to the information provided by DILAC, many students were eligible to be reclassified but had not been redesignated. Students who are reclassified do better in their academic work, so we ask for everything to be done so that students who meet the requirements can be redesignated. This will allow them to start taking the kinds of classes that they will help them later in the junior high and high school and make them more ready for college. Thank you for your time. Jesús Orozco.
Thank you. And then we have another public comment from Sandra Ayala.
Estimados miembros de la Mesa Educativa, de Educación y el Público en General. Mi nombre es Sandra Ayala, y vengo representando la clase de Padres Adelante de la Escuela Monroe. Yo soy una madre de un estudiante en dicha escuela y miembro del equipo de la, de esta, de, que está ofreciendo la clase. Me gustaría hablarles de la importancia de los programas para padres como Proyecto Para Padres y Padres Adelante. Me gustaría pedirle al Distrito Escolar si sería posible que extendieran o ofrecieran estas clases en todas las escuelas primarias para que así como yo, haya otros padres aprendiendo y sirviéndose de tan valiosa información. Creo que estos programas son prácticos e informativos y nos dan las herramientas necesarias para ayudar a nuestros hijos en su educación tanto académica como emocional. Y al mismo tiempo nosotros, los padres, nos educamos más ayudando a nuestros hijos. Le damos las gracias a nuestra directora, Celeste Argan, por habernos ofrecido esta clase. Gracias y buenas noches.
Dear members of the School Board of Education and members of the general public. My name is Sandra Ayala, and I'm here representing the Padres Adelante class at Monroe Elementary School. I am a mother of a Monroe student, and I am a member of the, of the team that is giving this class. I would like to speak to you about the importance of parent programs such as the Parent Project and Padres Adelante being offered at some of our schools. I would like to request from the school board if it would be possible to offer these classes to all the elementary schools so that there, there be parents learning and benefiting from all this valuable information. These programs are very practical and informative. They give us the tools that we need to help our children with their academic and emotional growth, and we become better educated as parents. We also wish to thank our school principal, Celeste Argan, for having made these classes possible for us. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Kenneth Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I was here last meeting, and I spoke before the city council today. Something came to me that I thought was an interesting angle to really to understand, you know, kind of my, my mission here. And my mission is actually to help the reformation of education, needs to be reformed, and higher standards. And actually, the understanding of what higher education actually represents. And today, I was thinking about the idea of what we're here to accomplish and what it means to be accomplished. And it turns out that I was kind of blessed through, through the arts and then also through athletics to, to actually be the first one to actually reach these accomplishments through, again, through the arts, through painting, through the abstract art movement, and then through the athletic exercise of tennis. Now, the, the idea with, with tennis now, it's, we recognize it as a competitive means to an end, and a person takes, begins a relationship with her stronger arm and develops that, and then they compete. But, and then they become accomplished in relation to winning. So winning is actually the measure of their accomplishment. And what, what I was able to reach and understand is that, what I was able to accomplish is a holistic oneness with my whole body. So I'm able to recreate the forehand perfectly, because I'm a teacher, perfectly, and really, both arms, and then also the backhand, and also the serve. And the, the goal of this accomplishment, my accomplishment, is, is developing this oneness, being able to, with my whole body. Now, this valuable information here, folks, I represent the standard of a teacher here now in this community that can provide us with knowledge which is healthy. And I'm sorry to say that, that the, say, your tennis coaches, they, they would actually be guilty of passing along unhealthy knowledge to the students of this school. And it's just the harsher reality, but now the...
Thirty seconds?
The, the nature of my accomplishment in relation to like, I, I make example of Roger Federer. And so the, his accomplishment, and then, because this allows us to understand the relationship that we have with money, you know, and in relation to winning and that whole connection. What I was able to do is overcome that whole situation, reach this point of, through, through tennis and then also through the arts. And I just feel a responsibility to come and share this with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke.
Right, so I believe that concludes our public comment. And we are moving forward to the consent agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to remove one item already. That would be the Santa Barbara High School fundraiser on D-2.
Okay, so D-2 Santa Barbara High School fundraiser removed and noted. Any other things we'd like to pull? Dr. Paz?
Item E-4, well, I'd like to abstain from item E-4.
Okay, so we can vote on the remainder of the consent agenda and take a separate vote for the item E-2, which is the Personnel Board List. Anything else, Board? All right.
I'll move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. I second it.
All right, so we are voting for the general consent agenda without the Personnel Board List. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. And now we will take with, we will take the Personnel Board List if we have a motion for that.
I will move to approve the Personnel Board List.
E-4.
E-4.
E-4. Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions? One noted. So that, the motion passes, four, four, four ayes and one abstention. And this, and now we're moving forward to our action agenda, and we have approval of the Jive hosted VOIP.
VoIP.
Contract.
Have Todd Rickman here, our Director of Technology.
Mr. Rickman.
So I'm here to answer questions that you may have about moving to voice-over IP telephone-based system.
All right. Board, do we have any questions? Do we need some, Mr. Herron?
Can you just, in a nutshell, tell us what it is?
Yeah, so traditional telephone systems that work over analog lines, PBX systems, are no longer in existence. And we have aging phone systems at all of our schools. And so we're going to be replacing it with a voice-over IP system where the telephone calls are, are made actually over the internet, over our network. And it will end up being a cost-saving to the districts of about $4,000 a month over our traditional analog lines that we have with Verizon right now.
Ms. Parker?
Now, we've been trying it at some schools with, or rolling it out, I should say, at some schools and having some difficulties without having a hosted server. So what do you see as the benefits of having a hosted server?
We're not going to have a hosted server. It's going to, we have had a hosted server, and that's been the issue. We don't have the manpower or the capability to maintain it. It's never worked correctly from the time it was installed. The company that we used, because it went out to bid, hasn't been very forthcoming with help. So what we're doing instead is when you go to a hosted system, you, you pay a monthly fee like you do with your phone bill. And then if there's any issues, they deal with the, the problem.
Dr. Paz?
Just a curiosity question.
As we're... couldn't talk about item number two, it occurred to me to think about if we had a power failure, what happens?
So, we were actually discussing that today. The truth is with most phone systems, our PBX phones that are installed at our sites right now, if the power goes out, the phones stop working. We were discussing the possibility of putting a generator in at the district office. So if the power went out here, school sites would continue to be able to make calls. But if the power goes out at a school site, they cannot make phone calls. Lucky for us, almost everyone on those school sites now have cell phones. So in case of emergency, they could make a phone call.
Second question related to that. I know there has been some discussion even at the board level about using our phones to... in place of the intercom system, because some of the schools are a little challenged with their intercom systems being out of date. So that would come up as another second question, especially as it relates to our having safe schools.
One thing that this system allows us to do is the moment it's installed, we have an intercom system across the campus, at least in the classrooms. And then we're going to add outside speakers. So a principal, a teacher can pick up and make a PA call to not only all the classrooms, but to outside speakers covering the entire campus in case of an emergency.
Thank you.
And the question that I have is you mentioned that this is, over the long haul, going to be a savings to us, but initially we are having to pay the fee. So are we going to see the savings in immediately? Are we going to see the savings in six months or in a year from now?
You know, the fee is almost completely covered by E-rate. So it's 90% covered by E-rate. So the initial outlay of capital, I believe, is $30,000 to the district. So we're going to be saving $3,000 a month, so, you know, we will see...
Within the year?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Parker?
And I just want to clarify, because the letter that accompanies this, and I think that we're probably just talking about different vocab here in terms of hosted server, non-hosted server, but the letter, it accompanies this, says Jive's hosted services maximize your budget resources while providing your best in...
I understand what you're saying. Now, so hosted means somebody else is doing the hosting rather than what we've been doing now, which has been hosting it ourselves, which has not worked. Yeah, so yes, we were saying the same things, just with different... Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any additional discussion on the item? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the Jive hosted voice over IP contract.
Great.
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Herron.
Thank you.
We're moving on to the submission of Santa Barbara Unified School District's Safe School Plans. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, President Lamone. This traditionally has been a consent item, but based upon our need to, I believe, have them see a greater light of day that are before you on action tonight. And Mr. Sumter, our Assistant Superintendent for Pupils Services, is responsible for our Safe School Plans.
Yes, and this is an annual process that we go through. School sites are required to update their Safe Schools Plans every year and bring them to the Board for approval by March 1st of that year. You do have attachments from each of the school sites. It should be noted that there is one school that is not on there, it's Harding. It was a late submission and will be brought back to you individually later at the next board meeting for submission. But these plans have been updated by each of the school sites and reviewed by school site councils, safety committees, for what provisions they might feel appropriate for the schools and then approved at the school sites before brought to you. I would like to note that, you know, in response to some recent events, particularly the Sandy Hook event, administrators of each of our school sites have conducted a walk through their campuses with law enforcement to attempt at coordinating efforts and knowledge related to emergency response at our schools. As of this week, anyway, they will all be complete. And on Thursday, Dr. Jodi and Mr. Handal and I will be meeting with law enforcement to review what things they found, some bullet point items of what they would suggest or recommendation... recommendations they might have in terms of what our campuses look like for safety and from their perspective, and then review some protocols that... and recommendations they may have for us to implement. So what you have before you now doesn't necessarily include all of those things that they may be recommended, because we haven't met with them yet, but they are the updated versions of those Safe Schools Plans for your approval by the state designated deadline.
Thank you, Mr. Sumter. Board, comments or questions? Dr. Bass?
A comment. I noticed that on the first one that I started reading, which was Adams, that in one of the sections where it's noting where they are supposed to go in case of an emergency, there was a little bit of a... I think the... the copying went the wrong way or it noted that Adams was supposed to go to Monroe or something up to that effect at the same school. So it was kind of reversed. Like, it probably meant to say that it was Monroe, the place that we're going... they would go to off-campus, but it noted that on-campus, they were going to Monroe. A little weird.
Okay, well, that is something that should, you know, that I will take back to the site so they can correct it in their plans and we'll correct it for the district office copy as well.
So that's one thing I noted. Second thing is more of a general question in terms of when I'm looking at all the checklist and going through them, my question really relates to what you just finished bringing up. When you look at recent events in the news and other areas across the country, it brought to my mind how often we actually go through those checklists and are we thinking about going through those checklists a little more often? I know there was sort of a schedule that we're supposed to be in there, but are we thinking differently in that regard? If you can comment on that, that would be great.
Yeah, we are thinking differently on that. Exactly how often those checklists will be reviewed hasn't been established, but we certainly require the emergency evacuation drills, lockdown drills, fire drills, all the different emergency responses to different situations that they be conducted on a regular basis. And there are actually established required numbers of times some of those things must be completed. So some of those checklists kind of get reviewed in the process of conducting those drills, but there's a more extensive review of those checklists that probably should be conducted more frequently. But typically, right up to this point, anyway, it's been annually that those checklists are reviewed when this plan is updated.
Ms. Edelson?
On locking doors, I heard from some of the schools that there was an issue where to lock a door, they had to actually open the door to get it locked. Did that come up?
It does come up. I don't... it hasn't come up to me from law enforcement. Mr. Hetjank is familiar with what issues that creates, but I'll let him respond to.
Thank you.
Currently, as part of our measured Q and Measure R bond funds, we are going through updating our hardware to meet that requirement that has been put on schools for new construction. We're going back through and retrofitting all of our schools. Our elementaries are almost complete and we're... and we'll proceed from there to our junior highs and then our high schools. This is being accomplished by District Locksmith, who's being paid out of bond funds to do the work. He's only working on this one project. And so soon, all classrooms will be able to be locked from the inside without having to go outside.
Perfect. Thank you.
And it might be noted, that's not an uncommon concern from the different districts I've been working in.
Mr. Herron?
Yes, thank you. I guess I have to say, I was more... I was impressed this year, on the whole, with the contents of the reports, especially in the secondary district. I thought there was a lot more creativity and sort of openness and difference between one school and another and they all had their, you know... Dos Queblos was exceptional. Lacoompa was exceptional. Santa Barbara High School did a great job. Peabody did a different method of doing it, but I thought it was a very good report. And even the elementary schools had more variation. I look at the safety goals and it bothers me when I see two schools that are identical. And you say it went through all this process of all these people and to come up magically with the same words and the same play, sometimes I wonder about... I like Lacoompa because they did tackle the safety issue to a greater degree than anybody else. So, on the whole, I thought they did a very good job.
Ms. Parker?
We do have public comment on this item?
All right.
Lane Wheeler.
Hi there. Lane Wheeler, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. While it's great to see these plans presented, in a quick, brief reading of them, I found a number of concerning issues, including people who didn't work at the site, sites that were identifying locations where students were to meet that were at a different campus, folks who were signed off as SBTA reps that, while they may be members, are not associated with the governing body of SBTA. And what it leads me to believe is that there may have been some replication of the plans without a lot of foresight and thought given to them. Adams has their students meeting on the Monroe School Playground, which I don't really think they're going to be walking down Los Pecitas to do. Roosevelt had the school secretary as the secretary for Monroe School and she's never worked at that school site. So there were some very concerning issues in there. There were many, many pages there, so it was difficult to kind of call through that and I won't say that I did every single site, but those were some of the ones that jumped out at me. I guess what that leads one to assume is, is what's in the plan actually in fact being produced and replicated and the training being given to the staff that is going to be required to do the kinds of things they have? A number of the sites had multiple responsibilities falling on a single person or two or three people, which having written the school site plan for... safety plan for Monroe, you know, you want to have redundancies and not center all the responsibilities in one or two people. So, while it's great to see the plans and I think some of the plans did address problems, there's still some lacking issues that I don't know that were addressed. Some of the child development programs that are located on sites don't seem to be associated. We have the incident that happened several years ago with the Adams preschool where there was a lockdown as a result of carjacking at Lacoompa Shopping Center and the school staff had left. The principal was off-campus. It was after school. It was, you know, 4:30 in the afternoon and that school site was sort of standalone out there. Fortunately, nothing happened. You know, all's well that ends well, but those kinds of things, I think, really need to be embedded in there. We can obviously look at every single issue...
Thirty seconds.
But we need to be as thorough as we can. And the training and support for the staff that will be responsible for the students who are remaining on campus needs to be there. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Ms. Parker?
I actually really appreciate a point that Mr. Wheeler raised and that is about our after-school programs and what happens when, you know, at many of our campuses, they are, you know, probably 50% of the students are remaining until, you know, between 5:00 and 6:00 PM. And so I understand that we're... we are fulfilling a state mandate with the... with the school safety plans and that they're a particular format because of what the state needs. And we're, you know, we're following state deadlines and so forth. But in terms of practicality, there's always issues of, you know, what do you... what happens? What's the safety plan at the district office? And then what are the safety plans? Because absolutely, you know, that incident at Adams School a year or two ago was one where it's just like, wow, you know, these... you know, you can have a school that needs to go on lockdown when there is no administrator and no teacher on campus and yet, you know, what's the integration with all the after-school programs? So something else for us to think about.
All right, and I would just like to add that I think it's already been noted, there were probably some schools that were a little bit more thorough and creative and I think really thought about what's happened lately and others that it might have seemed just like this was another piece to something that they have to do annually. I also specifically look at the safety goals and I get... I saw... I still saw several that were the same. So my hope is that every school is different. So besides changing the names and changing the phone numbers, I would also hope that the landscape for every school is a little bit different so that we think about some of this. I did appreciate schools that gave some specific measures, like achievable measures, so that they had a specific percentage that they were aiming for. I thought that that was something nice and a little bit more measurable, assuming you can measure some of it, but they did have some indicators there. So I thank everyone and I would also like to ask Mr. Marlin that upon your meeting with the city police and I'm guessing it's also the sheriff and the site leaders regarding the feedback, that that feedback be shared with the board? I think that this is something that our community is still asking, still got something today about school safety. So I want to make sure that the board is aware what updates we have and what recommendations are being made should something need to come forward to us and then also so that we could relay that to any constituents, parents or students who are asking.
Absolutely.
Well, we anticipate after that meeting that we will be coming back, not in a formal way, but with each individual school site having a confirming meeting about what we've learned, what will the common protocols be across the district if they need to change. And the purpose of our... of having law enforcement walk the campus, which they hadn't done in over a decade, with principals was to... twofold. One, for law enforcement to be familiar with it and two, for us to learn from their expertise, because the campuses are physically different, except for Galita Valley and Laclina, which are identical. So our anticipation is we'll learn a lot from that meeting. I've heard a lot of anecdotal information from principals about what they learned in those walk-throughs and we'll definitely come back and we'll fully inform all of our communities about any changes that we need to make in our protocols.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cash. Dr. Bass?
I just wanted to echo a little bit of the comments that some of the other board members are just saying, because I think that it's really important that we emphasize how important this is, especially as a community. You know, we see all the different things that are happening in our community, levels of violence that you just kind of don't anticipate in Santa Barbara that are happening. And our schools are big. We have a lot of individuals at our school, children, adults and people visiting. And I think when we look at the school plans and we see some of them kind of repeating a little bit and maybe not necessarily you get a sense whether someone was copying something over to another piece, it does give someone, whether it's a board member or someone in the public, a sense that that particular school site didn't take it as seriously as they should. And I think we need to make sure that that's emphasized to school sites, because at the end of the day, it's the parents who really need to have that comfort, that level of comfort, and children. They need to know that they're in a school site that is safe, no matter what happens or as much as possible. So I want to make sure that we're emphasizing that to sites and that that is a message that's being echoed by the board, but because we are hearing it from the community. Thank you.
Ms. Edelson?
I know each year, parents fill out emergency cards and you have a choice whether you would, in case of emergency, would you claim your child? Would you rele... who would you release them to? And I think, as a parent in this district for so many years, I have never really felt confident as to where I would meet the child, who would be... would there actually be staff member checking off this master list of... as to who can go with a different person? And I don't know if that would actually be the scenario or not, but I think it would give a sense of reassurance if somehow we could go through either the protocol as to what would happen in case of an emergency where parents would come to schools to pick up their children or not. And it seems in all of these situations where you've had, you know, a lockdown or somebody coming on campus, there's been this, you know, severe panic and I think we've all seen that on the news. And to put parents in that situation, I think, is really unsettling. So I would see real value in studying this and saying, what would actually happen? I mean, I don't know if you would actually need to go through a drill to do that. You know, would we get tele-parent calls? Would we get texts? How would that, you know, unfold? Would be important for the, you know, parents and community and the students.
All right, Ms. Parker?
And I'll just add on to that, that I think it just makes probably the most sense to have the... each individual school go over at school to, to have the, each individual school go over its school safety plans with a parent meeting, so that parents can be informed ahead of time, where is the pickup location? And what would the protocol be? I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I'll move to approve the submission of Santa Barbara Unified School District's Safe School Plans.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Dr. Cash, did you want to say something?
Uh, no.
No, okay. All right. And now, we are moving to the second reading and approval of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Initial Proposal to Negotiate with the California School Employee Association for Implementation in the 2013-14 School Year. Dr. Christensen?
Good evening. The district is sunshining the following articles as part of the collective bargaining proposal with the California School Employees Association, Chapter 37. First, Article Five, Wages. The district will propose changes in Section Four, Bilingual Premium Pay, that will improve equity for employees providing bilingual services. Next, the district will propose changes to Section Seven, Professional Growth Policy, to enhance professional learning for classified employees. And finally, the district will propose to make all step and column increases effective on the first day of the fiscal year. Also, sunshine is Article Eight, Health and Welfare Benefits. Next, Article Seven, Leaves, where the district will propose changes to Section One, Vacation Leaves, to clarify contradictory language, and the district will also propose changes to Section Three, Sick Leave, that will promote accountability and improve the efficiency of district operations. And Article Fifteen, Disciplinary Action and Appeal, the district proposes to reform at Article Fifteen.
Thank you, Dr. Christensen. And we're not going to take any discussion for this item, as it is a negotiable item, but we will take a motion. Mr. Herron?
Approval of F three.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. And at this time, I'd like to take a five-minute break, and we will resume at about 7:33 or so.